Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming. It's always good to see a good crowd at our legislative roundtable hall featuring Representative Chris Wenzel-Skeating and Senator Gary Deans. For those that don't know, you might have forever had President and Marshal Gary Chambers. Thanks for coming. So as far as the Marshall Chambers concerned, Chamber statewide wasn't as messy of business sessions as it was last year. As you'll hear from Senator Deans and his prop that he has sitting in front of him, some of those things haven't been hashed out yet. So some of those things that we're kind of looking for is fix it, bill to the earned sick and safe time and to the paid family medical leave. There were fixits in the bill, but they weren't really fixits. So from businesses statewide, we appreciate your work. And from there, we'll turn it right over to Chris and Gary.
Are we on on these mics? Can you hear us? Well, first of all, thanks, Brad. I want to thank the Chamber and YMCA for hosting us for you. We really do appreciate that. And just wanted to go through a few things, and then I'll turn it over to Chris, and then we'll open it up for questions. But I did bring my prop along today. This started out to be about a 50-page tax bill. And as the day wore on, on Friday, we had about a seven-and-a-half-hour layup where we weren't able to do anything because the DFL caucus had some problems within their caucus, and they had to resolve those, which is understandable. Then, on the next day, Senator Fatae said, if I don't get the Uber and Lyft stuff fixed, if he couldn't get that done, he was going to stop every bill. And he could do that because he was the 34th vote that they needed to pass anything. So we took 11 and 1/2 hours off the next day on Saturday, which was the second of the last day of session, why they worked on Uber Lyft stuff. They did get a deal made, but it's tentative and agree-- I mean, Uber and Lyft said, we'll tentatively stay in the state until we see how this is going to work. It's going to increase their cost and increase ridership cost about 25%. So I just don't know where that's going to go. So then, of course, as Sunday comes along, we're in a tough spot because they've got a bunch of bills they want to pass, but not the time to pass them. So about 8:00 Sunday night, they pulled the conference committee for the tax committee back together and said, we're going to use your tax bill as a vehicle bill to pick up nine other bills. So there was nine more bills that went into this piece right here. Four of those bills had not had hearings either in the House or the Senate. Five of those bills had a hearing either in the House or the Senate, but were never on the floor. Then they went through in the cutting room and picked up bits and pieces of bills that they wanted that they couldn't get passed in a regular bill because they wouldn't have the votes because it was stuff that wasn't what people wanted. So we don't know. At 20 minutes after 11:00, this bill shows up to be passed. There were five copies at the front and nothing on the computer because they hadn't had time to get everything put together to get it on the computer. So basically, what happened is this 1,430-page bill was passed in 20 minutes. Nobody knows what's in it. I talked to the nonpartisan folks on Tuesday, and they still have not been able to get through the entire bill yet. So we have a bill laying here that I don't know that anybody could stand up and tell me that either House or Senate, or partisan or nonpartisan people can tell me what's all in this bill. Because there's 73 articles in here, and there's probably several other bills where they picked little pieces here and there and put in there. So that's what-- if you watch the dust-up and the ruckus in the House and the Senate on Sunday night, this is the guy that caused those problems. And we have a rule in the Senate that says that it has to be a single-subject bill, omnibus bill. And this is not single-subject. It's very many subjects. A couple of years ago, that was taken to court on one of these bills, and the Supreme Court ruled that as long as the bill was mentioned in the first part, that they would say that it was a single-subject bill. We don't know if somebody will challenge it in court or not. We will just have to wait and see. Another thing I wanted to bring it up before I turn it over to Chris is last year, on the Human Rights Act, they took out religious-- the religious exemption. So when they took that religious exemption out, it meant that each church, religious organization, church or school, could be held accountable in hiring practices for hiring under the way that they would feel their church would want people hired. And so that got to be a real bone of contention this year because we wanted to get that exemption back in there. So we had negotiated probably two, three weeks, and we weren't making much headway. And then we got the religious organizations involved. And it's probably one of the first times since I've been in the Senate to where the denominations and the Catholic Church, the Jewish folks, the Muslims, and some other folks got involved. And for about six weeks, they negotiated on this bill. And they finally got an agreement made, and then we passed that agreement the next day in the Senate, the day after in the House. And after some shenanigans, it finally got over to the governor's office and got signed. So that religious exemption has been put back into the Human Rights Act. But the reason I'm bringing it up because it was really amazing to watch these church leaders come in, sit down at the table, and really worked hard and did a great job of negotiating. Without those groups coming forward, we would not have gotten this negotiated out. But they were able to put enough pressure on. And when they came in, there was, you know, it wasn't one of these where they're coming in to protest or that. They came in to negotiate and work it out, and we got it done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chris, and then we'll open it up for questions.
Well, again, thanks, everyone, for coming today. Thanks. Do I need that, or are we good?
Good.
Good? Just want to thank everyone for coming and the Chamber for hosting us here today and for the YMCA as well. The coffee's good this morning. I'd recommend it. You know, one of the things, as Gary talked a little bit about, is that religious exemption portion. It was really interesting, you know, it was discovered through the summer that that had been kind of stripped out, kind of through some real unique language last session, kind of buried in a larger bill, not quite as big as the one that Gary is using to keep the table from floating away on that end. But really, when asked in committee, the folks that stripped it out, it was under the assumption that was maybe done by accident or inadvertently, and it came out that it was actually on purpose. And, you know, it's one thing for something as serious as stripping religious exemption from, you know, essentially going against your biblical principles or whatever religion you happen to have, to forcing organizations and groups and priests and whatever to go against what they actually believe or be potentially threatened with, you know, imprisonment or fines or loss of property, but to actually do it on purpose. And that's what really, I think, stirred a lot of folks' hearts up is because it's one thing if it's an accident, we'll fix it. It's a completely other dimension to actually go after someone's religious beliefs in a fundamental way. And, you know, whatever you think about the rainbow flag, whatever you believe about a lot of those issues, that, you know, our biblical principles, our religious principles are exceptionally important. And the idea that you can think and believe whatever you want as long as you don't share it in a public space or outside of your home, that's essentially what the DFL majority had put into law in last session. And that should concern all of us. That should be an issue that we all take at heart, that our country is not based on the freedom of thought, the freedom of religion, as long as you practice it and keep your mouth closed at home. That should be something that we're all able to do in the public, be willing to share it. It may not be popular. It may go against the grain of what popular culture is, whatever's being pushed through the media, maybe against what's being pushed in our schools, it may be what's being pushed against in any organization. But you should have the right and the ability to freely practice that in faith. And that should be a real concern, that that is actually on the table in the state of Minnesota. And it took many voices, as Gary talked about, Jewish, Muslim, Christian voices, in a concerted way, over months, to finally push that back. And, you know, that is, regardless if you're a religious person, something that we should all respect. And, you know, that was just one of the big issues that a lot of people paid attention to. You know, obviously, from a business community standpoint, from a cost of business doing standpoint, you know, a lot of increases in mandates, in coverage, the earned sick and safe time, others which really are driving a wedge between business owners, their employees, really dramatically changing the way that relationship works. And, you know, as a business owner, as a farmer, and, you know, how we're going about the duty, we had many amendments on the House floor to say, hey, if you've got 20 employees or 50 employees, you're exempted from this. It's one thing to be a Walmart or a US Bank to be able to offer certain benefits to your employees. It's a completely different story when you're a small employer. You know, the cost of doing business, the cost of offering these things, whether you're a school, even a small city. You know, we're not-- you know, one of the biggest issues with the education bill is that, yes, they maybe gave them a 2% increase, but the amount of mandates and requirements that they put on school boards and put on local districts almost ate up entirely a lot of that increase in cost, if not going backwards. I mean, we're seeing school districts around the state actually eliminating staff, eliminating teachers because of the bills that we've heard. Even though they've got a little bit more money, the cost of actually keeping those folks in seats has gone up to the fact that they're having to lay off folks. You see that in suburban schools. You're seeing that in some rural schools as well. And the idea that our education system rewards where we're failing. You know, you look at the reading gap, you look at the education gap, over and over and over again, we give more money to schools that are doing a worse job. You know, from a rural school perspective, you maybe get $8,000, $9,000 a student, maybe 10. You go to some inner-city schools, they're struggling, they have a different job that they're trying to do, but they've shown over and over and over again that they're not up to the job. And, you know, we need to rethink the way we deliver education. We need to give people more freedom to best fit their family, best fit their community, and allow students that are stuck in failing schools to find someplace else to go. And a one-size-fits-all education system and a less-and-less education system that's not based on local control, but what gets handed down at the federal and state government is not improving things. You know, we saw that with gun storage bill that came before the body. We had a very anti-Second Amendment, a couple bills that can only one really move forward. One, part of it was good, the straw purchasing, which even that was stripped out and made weaker through the process. And that portion of the bill was to go after folks. If you knowingly, let's say Johnny up the street is a known felon, he shouldn't be owning a gun, he comes to you, asks you to go buy a gun, you go buy him that gun. You know, we ask for stiffer penalties to make sure that if you knowingly purchase a gun for someone who shouldn't own it, you should go to jail for a lot longer. And that seems like a pretty common sense thing to do. It would keep guns off the streets. It would keep guns out of hands of people that shouldn't own them. Even that was lessened a little bit, to say, let's actually go after the folks that are committing crime, but instead, let's go after a trigger that is completely legal in most states, approved by the ATF. It's not a machine gun. It just allows you to fire more bullets less accurately. Instead, let's blame a piece of aluminum for what people are doing. And let's make sure that we're not enforcing the laws that are currently on the books and put them in jail for longer. And I think that's what we've seen during the pandemic. Governor Walz let over 3,000 prisoners out of jail to help with COVID relief. From what I've been able to tell, I don't think crime has gone down. Like, our job as elected officials is to make sure that we're making good decisions for the greater amount of folks and putting people in jail that deserve to be there for longer. If they're choosing to commit crimes over and over and over again, there is a lot of departures. So when it comes to judge sentencing, sentencing, we're seeing a lot of downward departures. So let's say that you did a crime that it deserves 10 years or less. So what we're seeing, instead of getting the maximum amount or the minimum amount, we're seeing downward departures, which means they're routinely getting five, eight, three, two, or probation. What I believe we should be doing is holding judges more accountable to say, let's actually hold folks that are committing crime in jail longer so that you're at least getting the mandatory minimum when it comes to gun crimes. And if you're committing a gun crime, you can't plead it down. So we're told that with marijuana laws is that we have all these people for smoking marijuana are, you know, essentially being put in jail for years upon years. And so we need to make sure that we get rid of all these, you know, drug-related laws. Oftentimes, it was not the fact that they weren't committing a crime. It's they pled it down to-- they may have had meth and marijuana. They pled it down to a marijuana charge, and therefore, that's only part that the government looks at. So why are we pleading these things down from a gun crime to a petty misdemeanor to make a conviction a little easier? We should be going after folks that are actually committing these crimes because, believe it or not, it's not widespread. It's maybe a small portion of the population that's committing a vast majority of the murders, a vast majority of the crime. And that's not always a conversation that people want, but it's a conversation that we do need to have.
So that said, we'll open it up for some questions or comments. Who would like to go first?
Go ahead.
What is the status on that bill?
It passed, and the governor has signed it into law. So this is a, we would say, not a single-subject bill. So if somebody challenges it, if you want to challenge it, somebody would have to take it to court and challenge it. And we don't know what--
Does that go through the process?
No. Because we don't have the money to pay for the attorneys. I mean, you'd have to hire an attorney to do that, and we don't have any coffers as far as-- the Republican senators don't have any coffers of state money to do that, and we don't have the money to do it. So it would have to be an organization or somebody that said, you know what, we're going to challenge this, and they would challenge it. That'd be-- that's what happened last time.
And oftentimes, a lot of the date that it would take effect is not till, like, July 1st. And so even before that, until a bill actually comes into law and physically affects someone. So like last year, Governor Walz moved a rule forward that you couldn't-- let's say you're a PSEO student, so you're a high school student taking college-level courses. Governor Walz said that if you have a statement of faith, so like Bethel University, I believe it was, and-- no, it was Crown College and Northwestern College, were two colleges very, very popular with a lot of folks to take PSEO courses. And part of that, the course that you take at those institutions, you have to sign a letter of faith, you know, say, you know, I am a Christian, I believe in Christian principles, I will hold myself to, you know, certain moral standards, you know, I won't go out and do this or that or whatever during that period of time. And Governor Walz said that was too big of an exemption, and he was essentially pushing back against students from using PSEO dollars to go and visit and use those institutions that they chose to choose. And so there was a lawsuit. One of them was filed by a Crown College student who was affected through those PSEO courses, and then one was filed by the University of Northwestern. And those lawsuits couldn't move forward till after the bill actually took effect. So that's just part of that process.
And this will take effect August 1st. Yes?
What's the name of the bill? What is it? The number or the house?
I don't know if it does have a name.
It says Conference Committee Report on House File 5247. So it's House File 5247.
So what you can look up is how that bill was originally-- it's probably Gomez would be the chief author of that bill. And so House File 57, look it up and see what it initially was. And so what would be interesting, it would probably be a very small, kind of a do-nothing bill.
It was a tax bill.
It was a small, but it was a small tax bill.
Yes.
It was probably something to do with, maybe not even. And so you can see how you track a bill, you know, if you ever watched that cartoon talk about how a bill becomes law, you have the Senate passes a bill, the House passes a bill, and it goes to conference committee, and it irons out the differences. And I think that's one of the biggest complaints that we have is didn't even iron out differences. It brought new subject matter into the bill and just jammed it together and kind of a giant, a giant thing. And so--
Other questions? Yes, sir.
On the big bill, I'm going to do two things. If the court, that's not a single-subject bill, which of course it isn't, then the whole bill disappears. So everything in it gets washed away, right?
Correct. It would be null and void.
And the second thing is--
Well, let me just let me back up a little bit. It'd be null and void unless the Supreme Court said, we feel these pieces should not be in the bill, these could be in the bill. Then it would be however they ruled on it. But if they ruled the entire bill was out of order because of the fact of, may say, single-subject, then anything in this bill would not become law or that law, if it had already become law, that would be stricken back.
Then the second thing is, I understand that you didn't accomplish a bonding bill.
That is correct.
I'd like to know why.
Absolutely. Be more than happy to explain that. So what happens with the bonding bill? It starts in the House. And so the House majority puts together a bonding bill. Usually, it's a skeleton bill, and they decide how many dollars that they're going to put in the bill. The Senate does the same thing. And then what happens is the Senate then typically will talk to the minority, the majority will talk to the minority and see, for instance, like this year, what things the minority would want in the bill. And then the Senate puts together a bill, the House puts together a bill, leadership of the House and Senate and the bonding chairs usually get together, and they iron out the bill that they'll have. And then that bill is agreed on by the majority and the minority, and then that bill moves forward. This year, the House never put together a bill and put it on the floor and had it voted on. An actual bill to pass forward. In the Senate, there was a bill put together, but they had no input from the minority. So when that bill came to the Finance Committee, we got it tabled so that we could get some of our projects into that bill. There were very few rural projects. My district, I had 15 projects for $81 million, and I didn't have a project in the bill. Several other senators had the same issue. But it didn't make much difference because at the end, the House never sent a bill, the House DFL never put together a bill, got it passed in their body, and sent it to us. So that's why there was no bonding bill, is because we didn't have-- the process wasn't put forward to have a bonding bill, and there weren't the opportunities for both parties to sit down and decide. Usually, we sit down and decide what we would like from a standpoint of the Republican side, the Democrat side, and we negotiate what's going to be in the bill. The House does the same, and then it comes together. Last year, in order to get some stuff they wanted, they used a cash bill for about 300 and some million. This year, they used a $71 million cash bill. That doesn't require any of our votes. That's just on a straight majority. And the bill didn't get passed in time. 12:00 midnight came before the board was closed. So the bill never went into effect because it never got voted on properly during the actual session. So that's how we ended up without a bonding bill. There's two ways to look at it. If we had a bonding bill that would include a lot of rural projects like we usually do, it would have been a bonding bill, I could probably support it. But when we had very few projects in the bill, to spend 900-- they had 980 million was going to be the suggested amount. Well, you pull 70 off for cash, we're down to $910 million. We're going to spend $910 million. It's only fair that we have some of our projects in it. So by not having a bonding bill, what we've done is, instead of spending $910 million, that's still sitting on the shelf, and we can use that for bonding in the future. And I'm pretty sure there'll be a bonding bill next year. However, I was pretty sure there'd be a bonding bill this year. So we'll just see how it plays out. But that's what happened, and they do need in the Senate, they need seven of our votes. I don't know what they need over in the House. I think it's four. And so they never put that forward to see if they could even get those votes. So that's what they're choosing. Last year, we had a very major-sized bonding bill, about $2.3 billion. And so typically, you do a bonding bill every other year. In a budget year, you do the budget, and then the next year, you do the bonding. We've kind of got this traded out right now because last year was a budget and bonding. This year was bonding with no bonding. So we got to get that cycle back in order. But that's what happened.
Yeah. Gary did a good job. But there was a bonding bill, 2.7 billion dollars last year, which is essentially the same by now. I argue it against a bill that large for one reason is that we, you know, saw a huge expansion of government, a 40% increase in state government through spending of all the surplus plus $10 billion in tax increases. So go ahead.
I just want to thank you guys for the emergency medical services bill that you both were supportive and authored and got through the process bipartisan. I think you both know we had issues here locally. You know, there's talk of going to part-time emergency medical services, maybe going to Mutual, ABO, Cottonwood. And I think people in this room, regardless of politics, expect if we call 911 on the side of the road, if we have a car accident or a farm accident, that we have an EMS person show up, and that they don't have to drive, you know, long ways to get us. And that's just a basic function of government to make sure that happens. So I appreciate you guys authoring the bill and pushing it through on a bipartisan basis because for this area, it's very important for us. You just don't have the economy of scale in your smaller cities in your district that the Twin Cities does. I thought that the formula was written to help the rural areas. Appreciate that.
Well, and the reason for that is just there's so much, there's fewer people, but also such a large space. When you're talking about EMS, it takes time. You've got, you know, half an hour, 20-minute response times, depending on how close you are to the facility. And, you know, one of the issues we do have is recruitment and getting people just involved and wanting to get into that, or in a lot of cases, is volunteer. You got folks that are maybe making a couple bucks on a call or a run, and it's not as much as we would like to have seen in it. I think the original ask was--
120.
120. And that was to kind of hold the baseline a little bit. And, you know, that's just interesting. It's all about priorities, you know, a lot of different things. We expect, whether you're Republican or Democrat, I would say that's something most anyone, even the most constitutional, small-government type would say, you know, when it comes to, you know, police, ambulance, fire departments, you know, there's, you know, building roads, those are the, you know, I would say those are all kind of in that same genre of that we socially do have something to do together with it.
We ended up putting $24 million in, and we know that that's a long ways from what was requested, but there's some, a study going to be done, kind of determining what we can do policy-wise to change this around to make it more efficient and more workable for our small communities. But next year, we're going to have to be a little more serious about the funding on it because it's-- 24 million will get it through this year, but next year, we're going to be back, and we need to get something that's stable and reliable so that we don't have these issues in the future.
Both Medicare and Medicaid, the majority of the ambulance calls with elderly and the people who don't have income, they pay 39 cents on the dollar for events. And I know it's not your fault. But we do appreciate you filling the gaps. So at least for next year, we've got 24-hour service in Marshall.
Yep. One of the things they talk about doing, and I think it's in the bill for pilot program, and what that'll amount to is instead of, when they'll screen these calls a little tighter when they come in to find out what the need is, because sometimes the ambulance gets out there and the person needs to have a ride to the doctor, or the ambulance gets out there and they have to have a ride to go get the drugstore, to get their prescription drugs. So they're looking at doing a kind of a sprint car thing to where, when that call comes in, if it's not an emergency, you have to take an emergency room. If it's something that you could use a regular passenger vehicle, they would send the driver out with a passenger vehicle to take that person to the doctor, to the drugstore, or do that in order to cut down the ambulance time because of the cost is so much different. So there's a pilot program that's going to be, see how that, if and how that would work, so.
There was a, I remember we were having a debate kind of similar to that, Gary, probably two or three years ago, where we had Jim Newberger, who was one of our House members. He was also sat on an ambulance service, and he was telling us stories where they would sometimes have people that would call the ambulance because they had it, quote-unquote, emergency. Essentially, it was they were trying to get a free ride to town. And, you know, that's obviously, we need to fight that. That's not the role of these professionals. We don't need to be taking folks downtown so they can run their errands and then get a cheap ride home or whatever that might be. And so that's, especially when it's Medicaid, Medicare, which are already paying way less than actual cost to reimburse these services. And that was another concern. They wanted to kind of do a Medicaid, Medicare buy-in and increase the amount of folks that were eligible for a lot of the government programs. And, you know, currently, one of the reasons why insurance is so expensive is because when the state program reimburses on a dollar basis for health-- the state program reimburses on a dollar basis for healthcare, they're maybe paying 60 cents, 50 cents. So the rest of that 50 cents has to get cost shifted to private insured. And so when the government, you know, they say, well, it's a, you know, Minnesota care is so much cheaper, it's because, well, they don't actually pay the whole cost of the care. And so that cost gets shifted on to others. So a lot of our rural hospitals were very concerned about how that was going to affect them in their business model to actually stay afloat. So the same issue we're having with ambulance services, those are the same issues that a lot of our rural hospitals are having as well. And, you know, HHS is also already, I think, 40, 45% of the state budget. And to have a lot of that increase could potentially be, you know, just a downturn for a lot of our rural hospitals as far as their ability to stay afloat, attract doctors, and, and, you know, that was one of the other things, from a healthcare standpoint, is we were trying to help with the healthcare compact, which essentially allow nurses and doctors to operate, depending on how they're licensed, across state lines, and make that a lot easier, and also for recognizing licensure from other states to bring people in. You know, the same issues that we're having for welders, the same issues we're having for plumbers, as the same issues we're having in our hospitals with nurses or EMS, is we just generally have a big shortage across the board. And so being such a close proximity to South Dakota and having access to folks across state lines, I think is very important, better, both in education, but also in healthcare, so.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
Yes, Brad.
Yeah, can you talk about the fixing bills that I had referenced in the bottom when it came to paid family medical leave, permanent period of safe time, where we ended up, where we ended up on minimum wage, and also the YLCO and SRO bill, which I know was actually a bit on.
Go ahead.
So with the paid family leave, that bill was brought back to get some work done, but the things that we felt needed to be worked out, didn't get worked out. What they did do is, they found out, as they started putting this together, they realized they were about a billion dollars short of what they thought the cost was going to be. So immediately, they have to raise the rate up, and they're not to the max yet, but they're getting pretty close, and the bill hasn't even been finalized and set, ready to go. So what they did do is they took, if you had earned sick leave coming, they took that, they took the first week off, and so instead of being 12 weeks paid by the new system, there'd be 11. And that would happen that first year. There was a lot of pushback on that, but they did that in order to absorb some of all the costs. So that was what happened there. As far as definition, that did not change, as far as definition of family, that's still way too broad. And that was the major things that they didn't or did do. Other than that, there wasn't much change on it. They just were way off. And what, what originally happened is we took the bill, they took the bill and took the, the bare bill and run that through to get a fiscal note. Anytime you spend money, you have to have a fiscal note, to see what the cost of what you're going to do really is. When this fiscal note came out, it's based on kind of the simple bill. As time went on, the bill got pieces added to it, and added to it, and added to it. And it ended up being considerably different in the end than it was in the start. But those costs were never added on to keep up. So this really wasn't a surprise to most of us, that this, that the cost of this was being, was going to be a lot higher than what was being stated because of the way the fiscal note was done. And so we ended up with the cost that's considerably more. I'm not convinced that we still have the true cost, to be honest with you. I, I think we're still in for one more shock wave before this gets introduced in 2025. So we'll see how it plays out.
Well, I think one of the hidden costs really is going to be the, you know, we just talked about schools having a shortage of teachers, we already talked about EMS, hospitals already having a shortage of nurses and doctors. When this program comes out, and you have 12 weeks to potentially utilize to help family members or whatever, and then you can't necessarily backfill that employee while they're gone, that we're going to have to multiply the amount of people we have to actually work the hours, because a business has to operate, right? A hospital has to operate, it takes a certain amount of folks just to keep things going. And if people can fundamentally just be gone and have no real incentive to come back because it's a state right, we're essentially getting rid of a third, or a fifth, or a sixth, or an eighth of the workforce through a government program. And so that's one of the issues that really isn't, you know, we don't quite understand how it's going to work. People say, oh, people won't use it. Really? I mean, so you're telling me I'm going to get paid and not be at work for pretty much anybody I kind of know? Grandma up the street? And then how many? Like, how many people can take off a month of work to take care of grandma? Is it one person?
In Arizona.
In Arizona? Is it three? Is it 10? Do they have to be there at the same time? Like, if you have 10 people from one family saying, well, grandma's sick in Arizona, I need to go down and take care of her. Is that one person? Or is it everyone that she's related to? She could legitimately be sick. Wait, for anyone to say that's not going to happen is foolish. And it's going to. And then we're going to have some other bills that say, well, we got to track it. Well, who's going to track it? We're going to have hundreds of state employees that are going to go sit there that can't even run a website, right? And they're going to say, well, well, Johnny's there from 5 to 7, okay, and Bill, you're going to be there from, really? Like, that's the role of government? I mean, we can't even fix a pothole. And yet, we're going to be telling folks what hours are going to be, or what days they're going to be taking care of grandma in another state, because they're on a government program? And you think life's going to get cheaper when you're shopping downtown? I mean, we're going to see closed, just as we saw during COVID, closed because of, grandma's got the flu in Arizona, we can't get anyone to work. And by the way, we're going to have some mandate on how much you get paid while you're there, by the state. If you're comfortable with the, the role of government and the amount of influence it's going to have in your daily life, great, I don't agree. There's already insurance programs available in the private market that offer sick and safe time, there's already programs that have some of these things available. If you, as a business owner, feel you need to offer that to get employees to come work for you, the market is there. The government doesn't have to have hundreds of employees to do this job for you, or mandate it, and from employee number one. Right? Like, if you feel it's the best thing for you, go buy it. If you're a business owner that wants to offer this to your employee, go buy it, it's there. The idea that we have a state-run program that's going to do any of this is completely ludicrous, in my mind. Absolutely wild.
Even if we could compromise and hire an outside service, an outside private company to manage it, would make a world of difference. If you take a look at the states that have this, that use outside private contractors to manage the program, their costs are considerably less than what our costs are projected to be, and what other states that are managing the full program themselves. In Minnesota, and I'm sure this isn't going to be the right number at the end, but they're saying, when it's, when they started this, they said it would take 400 new employees. Well, now with all the different things they're finding, it's going to probably be more than that. And we can hire an outside private service that, that's what they do, manage these things, would be much cheaper, but there's no interest in doing that. They want it to be a state-run program, and so it's unfortunate. You would ask about SROs. There was an agreement made, probably halfway through session, that everybody signed on to and everybody can live with. Nobody's real excited about it, but it's, it's something the schools can live with. The folks that were concerned about infiltration of law enforcement within the schools, they're happy, and the law enforcement people feel, I mean, they, everybody feels they can live with it, so that's kind of where that went. And what was your other?
Minimum wage was where that ended up.
That has not changed, nope. But that don't mean it can't or won't, but at this point, other than the normal step up. Other questions, concerns?
One of the other issues was the Uber lift? We'll just keep talking, that's what we do, if you guys don't raise your hands. That's what we hear, we're going to listen to that talk, but, go ahead, there we go. Look at that, that's...
Since we're talking about schools, school mascots, with Native American names that have been changed, do they get extended a year? And are schools still on the hook for the...
Yes, they're on the hook. So you've got, you know, we've got institutions, they feel that, you know, some school districts think it may cost a million dollars to switch things around, or, and, you know, one of the biggest issues is you kind of have this group that's set up to say is, if anyone in the organization, one of the tribes says, we don't like it, it's gone, right? And so, you know, essentially, like this Warroad School, I think they're called the Warriors, or I forget what their school name is, but they came down, the tribe that actually gave the land to the school district and helped build the school, was like, this is part of our culture. We actually support that this school is called that, and the mascot is called that. Now we have an arbitrary group that says, well, we don't care what you locals think, even though they're on board, tough. And, you know, like, you know, it's, if it's something just advertly offensive, I get it, but a lot of, you know, the, you know, if your goal is to erase groups of people from the public space, this is one way to do it.
So the school Chris is talking about, that was originally, the land was given by the local tribe, and the agreement was, and the tribe paid part of the cost to build the school, but the agreement was that forever, it would be the Warriors, and that would not change. That was the agreement. And that's put out by the tribe. So the tribe put quite a bit of work into that last year, saying, no, we're going to keep this. But other tribes objected, so they have to take it down. Sleepy Eye, Minnesota, that's going to cost between 500 and 600,000 dollars to change that mascot. And, I mean, it's really unfortunate, because there's going to be 500, 600,000 dollars that they're going to have to spend, that's going to come out of other spending that could have helped children and could have helped do other things in the school. When they passed that bill, the agreement was, is that they would make sure this year there was funding put in, which was kind of strange, because last year was the budget year, but this year, they were going to put money in to make sure these schools had some help to pay for all of this. Well, when it come time to do that, there was no, no, they weren't willing to put the money in this year. And so the local schools are being hung with it, it's really unfortunate, because any, I've heard of as high as 1.5 million dollars to change everything, and it's really unfortunate. But that's what's happening. Yep. Yes, Brad?
Oh, so environmental permitting, we had a piece in our home, too, because it's imperative to permit in the state of Minnesota. Can you kind of follow where that all ended up as well?
Well, that, that was kind of the, just a very small, little bit of a movement towards the understanding that permitting is exceptionally difficult in Minnesota. And that was in the energy, energy field, it's no, no secret that we have a new law that's coming in that's, you know, carbon-free by 2040 in the state of Minnesota. And so that's a state mandate that our utilities need to divest themselves as much carbon-producing electrical generation as possible. And part of that is where the electricity is and where it's going to be, is in two different places. And one of the big roadblocks is in transmission lines. And so under current law, there's a fairly robust process, if you're, went to the, there was one in Marshall here, I don't know, three or four months ago, at the, I forgot, is Ever, Ever, what's that hotel called there? Everspring Hotel. And essentially, part of that process is they create two different routes. And so when, when a line is coming through your area, you, you have one that's going one direction and one that's going to other. So you have two different potential routes, and then each route has a, kind of a minimum maximum movement of about a mile to a mile and a half. And part of that permitting process was to eliminate part of that, to have a duplicate, duplicate route, so it would be a singular best potential route process. And then, part of that is because it's a state mandate, then they would get rid of any environmental review that would be related to certificate of needs, so does it actually need to be built? And then some of the efficiencies with where the site is going to be, so they're going to potentially be moving some staff from the Department of Commerce into the PUC, which is the other portion that helps direct where these things are going, these projects. And so all in the mind of that, we can build giant red blinking wind turbines here in southwest Minnesota that we get to look at to power the Twin Cities metro area. And so that's essentially why we saw that movement towards that, to try to increase the amount of time by days and weeks and, and months. Because to, I think it's five to 10 years to build a transmission line by the time you get your process going. And some of the other things were, we felt that if these are state mandates, if this is part of kind of a Green New Deal in the state of Minnesota, that landowners, because this isn't really needed, right? We already have the generation we need to power our economy. This is changing the dynamic, this is taking it all from Becker, Minnesota, and going to shove all that generation down here in southwestern Minnesota in a non, you know, it's non-baseload energy, so it's not going to be running all the time, it'll be intermittent at best. And so they're proposing that there'll be a natural gas peak plant that's potentially built in Ballathan area, and then another peak plant that's going to be built up in the Fargo area. And so they're going to take advantage of this new line that's going to be running from southwest Minnesota, with a lot of increased generation from wind and potentially some solar. And it's going to go back up to Becker, then where it's going to get redistributed under the current, kind of the current distribution system. Essentially, it's called Sherco 1, 2, and 3, and those are coal-producing generators that are up there. And there's talk that, initially, that they were going to have to shut all of those down, but what's interesting that's going on is because of the AI and the data economy that's evolving, is that there are hundreds of acres being bought up by Microsoft, hundreds of acres being bought up by Google, and, and some other players up there that essentially would take as much energy as what the coal plant is currently producing. And so regardless, you know, we may not work our way out of this, and because of, you can buy credits essentially, so if you are making carbon, you can buy them across state lines where maybe there's solar over there. And one of the other issues with that is really protection of prime farm ground. And, you know, just as, you know, in California, they're protecting pristine desert from solar expansion. And yet, we're unwilling to protect pristine five-foot-deep black dirt in southwestern Minnesota. To me, that seems ridiculous. The idea that we have a myriad of soils throughout the state. Let's put it on sandy, low-producing soils. We shouldn't be putting any of this where we're taking land out of production, where we're seeing food costs, you don't go to the grocery store and you see grocery prices going down, you're seeing them going up. And there's a lot of different things that we should be doing, but permitting in that particular area was moved forward, it's working better with the DNR, and our goal is not just to have it where we have special projects, like in renewable energy, but expand that permitting process to all businesses, so that we can get the ball rolling faster for business to develop, so.
Well, if you take, like Chris was talking about solar, if we would take the, the CRP, which is 99-year easement land that the state government owns, and start putting solar gardens on that, it could make a world of difference. But when the state government starts talking about doing that, or the federal government starts talking, doing it on their, on their federal lands, they get so much pushback from the environmentalists that they just back off. But at some point, we're going to have to stop taking farm ground out of circulation to put these soil, these solar systems on, and we're going to have to have these solar gardens going to, onto some of these other lands that we have. In the environment, between the environmental bill, the bill for the 3/8% sales tax, the Lassard-Sams bill, and the LCCMR bill, which is a portion of some of the pull tab money that comes into the state that LCCMR gets, the state is going to purchase in the next two years, 13,000 acres in Minnesota. Now think about that. That's a lot of land, and this has been going on for some time. You get in northern Minnesota, and there's an awful lot of state-owned land up there that could be used for solar. There's a lot of state-owned land right here in, in southwest Minnesota that we could be using for solar. But it's just like, we cannot get that door open, and we just have to keep trying to do that, because that's going to be, if we're going to keep up with the solar, we're going to have to figure something out different where we put it. Yes, sir?
Dave Schelka, I'm the general manager of Marshall Municipal Utilities here in Marshall. I appreciate what you've done and all the work that you've done representing... I appreciate what you've done and all the work that you've done representing citizens of this community and across the state on utility issues like solar, like wind, and like transmission. My question to you is, we were promised two years ago when the energy bill was passed, that the big concern and a big focus will be on the cost of electrical energy to our customers, to the citizens of Minnesota. And that that would be a part of the discussion moving forward to make sure that we're not going to be overburdening the citizens of Minnesota and industry on increased electrical energy. When we talk about these bills and we talk about all the things, solar, wind, transmission, has, has the state been looking at the increased inflationary pressures on the utility rate because of the implementation of these policies? And if not, how can we start encouraging that? Because we're looking at transmission costs alone by 2035 doubling our electrical energy costs. That's an incredible impact to our economies and to our customers, especially fixed income, especially the elderly. These are going to impact us in a very dramatic way as far as energy cost is concerned. We all know that energy is the lifeblood of every community in every state. If you do not have it, you will not succeed. And so I'm just wondering where you're at on that.
Well, one of the issues, and you're a hundred percent right, I mean, they were going to make sure that they watched though these utility rates just didn't go off the charts. So if you look, they're, they're really crawling right up there. And it's not because of what the local power companies are doing. It's not what, it's not coming from there. So there are comments, when you talk to them about this and say, okay, this is what you were talking about, now where is it? Well, you need to understand, Senator, that what we're talking about is what is the alternate? You know, what's the alternative here? If we don't do something to make energy cleaner, this is going to be cost to the society because we don't have clean energy. So now we go down that road, it's, well, energy is, the cost of energy is reasonable if you compare it to what will happen if we don't do this and the impact it's going to have on the environment and what it's going to cost to manage that problem. That's the, that's the door they get out on. And that's a bunch of horseswine, or, excuse me, but that's a bunch of crap.
They have a bill for that, too.
For saying it that way, I would, I would counter that by saying China in one year has produced more carbon dioxide in coal-fired plants. In one year, that's negated the last 10 years of carbon savings in the entire United States. And yet we're talking about our state and our people here that are going to get hurt by this.
Yep.
And so, and I'm sorry, I'm being a little passionate here because I do serve an amazing community of people and customers that require somebody to say something on their behalf. And I just appreciate, again, your support for that.
Oh, absolutely.
What you have done to mitigate these issues, but we are looking at a tsunami, tsunami of costs when it comes to electrical energy. And it will start to affect our economies. And maybe not in the Twin Cities, but in our rural settings here, it is vital that we keep these costs down.
I think another problem we have is that in the United States, we seem to think that other countries that aren't doing what they could be doing to have cleaner energy, that is our, that we have to make up for that. We need to take care of ourselves. And while China was telling us how great it was that we were getting out of the coal plants, they're sitting over there building three new ones.
Oh, yes.
And just smiling. Of course, they were clean coal plants compared to the old coal plants, but we have, we can have clean coal plants here too, if it's allowed to be done, but they're not going to allow that. Another thing we could be looking at is starting to look at nuclear. Nuclear is much more efficient than it used to be. It's much cleaner and much safer. But this year, we did get nuclear in on the energy bill and it lasted into about probably two to three minutes on the conference committee and it was back out. But we really need to get serious about other types of energy. If we're going to get away from clean coal, then we need to be looking seriously at all the options and not just a couple. And that's, that's been a battle. We'll keep fighting it, but it's long-term.
Appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
Just from a natural resource standpoint, they, they estimate the same amount of copper will have to be mined in the next 15 years that's been mined in the last 500. Three of the most major, they're expecting three of the most major copper mines in the world to be closing down in three years because they're spent. There's, there's not any more copper to be had in them. And so I've read some, like the Wall Street Journal had an article about this. They said, currently, I think copper is at $10,000 a ton. They're estimating if this is going to be potentially moving forward just within the United States, that we're going to see copper into the 40, 30, $40,000 a ton. And so whether that's cobalt that's being mined by slave children in Congo, whether that's copper, whether it's unwillingness to mine it, and then on top of it, you've got President Biden canceling coal leases on BLM lands. So it's kind of a perfect storm that we're going to inadvertently raise the cost of coal power by cutting off the supply of coal. We're going to increase the amount of coal being burnt overseas. And the coal that was being burnt here in the United States will be loaded up, put on a train, put on a cargo ship and then burnt in some other place. And, you know, the, the idea that, you know, I mean, I'm for actually making sense, if it makes sense, but the idea that carbon emissions are going, are going to be continuing to rise, but we're going to hamstring the American economy in order for us to feel better about ourselves here at home. And I'm all for doing what's right, but at the end of the day, are we strategically placing ourselves as a country, as a nation, in a better strategic place by doing what we're doing? I don't think so. You know, I think we're fundamentally, you look at a silver that's going into, and copper that's going into this new economy, the idea of electrifying the grid, so that's essentially getting rid of natural gas that's heating people's homes, the idea of getting rid of propane that's using, to be heating people's homes. Those are all things that we have abundance of. We have an abundance of natural gas and we should be utilizing it as a gift, not as an enemy. And, you know, we're, you, you look online, like what Minneapolis is doing, they're trying to ban the, the construction of new homes that have gas running to a stove or gas running to a furnace. Is that the government's job? While we already have those pipes running to these homes? And, I mean, if you're just, if you're a rural residence, like, it'd be pretty foolish to be an only electric farm? Because just the foundation of, I can run my furnace on probably a $4,000, $4,000 watt generator because I have propane in the tank. If I have natural gas or I have propane, I can get by with that. Then that's maybe a $200 or $300 generator. If I have to heat my home with electric heat by government mandate, the size of generator I need to purchase is the multiple thousands of dollars to run that generator if the electricity happens to go out. I can't afford to put a solar panel on my roof and I'm guessing most of you guys can't. And if you can, it's because the government's subsidizing it by 50%. And we've seen a huge increase. We, the, yeah, anyway, we'll go to the next question.
Well, with that said, Chris, we're going to have to wrap it up because we are close to the time.
Everyone, thanks for coming. Don't hesitate to contact Gary's or I's office. You know, the, the issues that we face as a state are big and the conversations we can have are important. So whether we agree or disagree on an issue, don't hesitate to write or call and we'll try to have a good conversation about it. So thanks a lot for coming.
And again, thank you, folks, for hosting us. We appreciate it. Thank you, folks, for being here. We try to make it a habit of coming out before session and after session. Before session to talk about what's going to happen and after session, talk about what did happen, but we always appreciate all your input. And if you have any questions or comments, always feel free to get ahold of my office or Chris's office or both. And we both have newsletters, so if you want to get on our newsletter list, just call our offices, give us your email and we'll get you on the newsletter list. We do them once a week during session and once a month during the off-session. So again, we appreciate your help, appreciate your support. And something comes up, feel free to get ahold of us. And thank you, folks.
Thanks.